I'm getting ahead of myself. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We used to do the roll call before the pledge at the Park Commission. Ready for a roll call?
All right Supervisor Fisher.
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Lockren.
Here.
Trustee Aliaga.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Nalomothu.
Here.
And Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Everybody has the agenda before them. Is there a motion to approve or to add or change?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Any announcements by the board?
It was a great holiday weekend with the parade.
Yeah.
It's very nice.
Excellent.
I was glad to see the parade back.
Absolutely. Yeah, it was a beautiful day. Beautiful day. Any announcements by members of the public? Joe?
Not an announcement, just a congratulations on their great job at Saturday over at Senior Center.
Good.
Events.
Independence Fest.
Well done.
Thanks for telling us. It's great. Thank you. Any announcements online or you want?
Yes, I just wanted to mention the fire department and all the other surrounding fire departments that showed up to the fire at Independence Square on Monday. Thankfully, I think last I heard the report no one was hurt, although many have been displaced, but I think Red Cross, to my understanding, and family members have stepped up to hopefully take care of those people, so I think we should think about them. And thankfully, again, nobody, none of our firemen were hurt or no residents either, so.
Yes. I was gonna ask the chief to give us a little note on the situation when he got his agenda item.
That's all I have.
Okay, anybody online that would like to comment or make an announcement? Hearing none. Public comment. People have five minutes to make a public comment on matters not on the agenda. Anybody in the audience? Anybody online?
It's five, not three.
It's five here and five in the regular business, because I raised that from three to five on the regular agenda.
We changed that a while ago, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. So everybody should have enough time to speak in five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Good question. Consent agenda. So we have three items on the consent agenda. Request to approve the board minutes from June 21. Request to approve the June 28 check run in the amount of $1,532,181.12. And ratify the June 22 payroll in the amount of $347,165.95. And number three, we have a request to adopt a resolution 2022-012 establishing guidelines for granting poverty exemptions from property tax in accordance with applicable law. Is there any discussion on these items?
I just wanna have a discussion on item number three, that I know this is on there every year, to approve. I guess it should be, I guess I would like it to be noted for the public, did we change anything? Are the numbers, are the levels changed?
Yeah, why don't we take it, we're gonna take it off the consent agenda. It'll be the first item we do on regular. So let's, maybe we could have a motion to approve items one and two on consent, and then we'll take that one up.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve consent agenda items one and two. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. Regular business, or actually K, items removed from consent agenda, this would be the poverty exemption resolution. Kim, did you wanna speak to this?
Sure.
I only objected so Kim could come and talk more.
Good evening Township Board. We recently went through our five-year annual, or five-year AMAR audit with the county, and pretty much every municipality in Oakland County got their hands slapped on their poverty resolution a little bit to bring them in line with one another and the most recent public act. So what was changed? Let me pull this up. We had the wrong public act cited in one of the paragraphs, so that was corrected. We removed paragraph number four regarding maximum dividend income. And that will fall under the asset test. There's an asset test that says you cannot have more than $100,000 in assets outside of your primary residence. So that did not change. We just took out the dividend income limitation. C, we removed paragraph six, which stated an applicant was not allowed to own real estate in addition to their homestead. And this pretty much falls under the asset test also. They will allow you to own a second home if your assets do not exceed $100,000 outside of your primary residence. And D, remove paragraph 13, which permitted the board review to deviate from the policy for substantial and compelling reasons. They will no longer allow that. You have to stick to your guidelines, it's very black and white, cut and dry now. And that is essentially all that changed.
Okay. Ryan?
Yeah, I guess my question was, there was, we set a level for the, for the poverty, I guess, you know, your income or whatever. And it seemed like ours was more lax than the county was. I don't wanna say lax, that's not the right word, it was, it was more beneficial for the resident, I think, than the county was. Did that change at all?
That did not change.
So we still have, we still allow a higher income level than the county level is?
Approximately one and a half times what the standard federal poverty guideline is. We're going by HUD's low-income guideline, and it's about 50% higher.
Okay. That's, I guess that's why I wanna know, because we, I knew we had a more lax, that's a bad word, a more.
Liberal.
Yeah, liberal, yeah, policy than the county did, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, we didn't lose that for our residents anyways.
Nope, that did not change. All we did was clean up the resolution language and standardize our county language overall.
It's very good, because part of that checking is the hardest part, that you have the exemption as well, so.
It is.
Going through all those different jumps. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody in the audience? Anybody online? We have three people now. Hearing none, is there a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda item number three, a request to adopt resolution 2022-00, zero, excuse me, 2022-012 establishing guidelines for granting poverty exemptions for property tax pursuant MCL 211.7U.
Just a quick, down below it says the resolution is 2022-12, I don't know if that mattered or not. Good?
Yeah, that's why I said 002, I stopped and restated as 012.
012. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved in seconded, any other discussion? Not all in favor of consent agenda number three. Consent item three.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Number three is approved. Do we need a roll call? Okay, well, let's have a roll call. Well, it was unanimous.
Of course.
It was unanimous, so it's the same as a roll call. That's the good news. Because you know exactly how everybody voted. All right, regular agenda. Request to accept proposal for asphalt parking lot replacement at fire stations one and three, and approve Fire Department Capital Improvement Plan 2022 Budget Amendment Number 18. Chief? Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. So yeah, this is a project that was budgeted in 2021 to do asphalt and concrete for the fire stations. The concrete did get done, and the asphalt didn't, because it was too late in the year to get the asphalt completed, so. We're trying to finish the project now, so we went out to an RFP for, again, for stations one and three. I believe the pictures were in your packet. The parking lots are in disrepair quite a bit. So again, following Township procurement plan, we received five bids back in. I'm recommending that we use diversified asphalt and concrete out of Waterford, Michigan. Their bid spec back to us was the most complete and detailed. They also did two different site visits, had the opportunity to speak with them, and feel comfortable with their abilities and confidence that they could do the project quite well. Within the CIP, we do have the funds available. There's still approximately $114,000 that was budgeted for this, still there. We would need a budget amendment. And the project comes in at 95,549 with diversified. So I'm looking to get approval for diversified to do the project, which they also, they added a letter in with the packet that they'll get the project done before August 1st, because the asphalt companies are signifying that there's a potential increase in costs of asphalt. So they've assured me that they, if they do get the bid, that they will have the project in and completed prior to August 1st, so we don't incur any additional cost from the asphalt companies.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the board or comments? Anybody from the audience that would like to take five minutes to speak?
I'm ready.
I have to hear nobody. Anybody online would like to take five minutes to speak? Everybody online? And is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal received from diversified asphalt and concrete of Waterford, Michigan, for the professional services associated with the asphalt replacement at fire stations one and three, outlined in the agreement, in an amount not to exceed $95,549, and to authorize the supervisor to sign the acceptance of the proposal as the authorized representative of the township, and to approve the 2022 Budget Amendment Number 18 as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded, any other discussion?
I just wanna make one comment.
Yes.
Just for the public's, in case they haven't read the packet, remember, this is at fire station on Citation Drive and on Maybe Road.
Correct.
These are the two locations that we're looking at.
Yep.
Just for the public's knowledge.
Absolutely.
All right, any other discussion? Anybody online? Hearing no discussion or comments further, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Chief, while you're up there before you leave. You're probably gonna stay the rest of the meeting, just because you're interested. Can you give us just a thumbnail sketch of a pretty substantial fire over the weekend?
Yeah, so I know, everybody knows, we had that fire, it was Saturday at Independence Square Apartments, kind of on the south end of the complex near Dixie Highway. Report came in as fire coming out of one of the apartments' door walls, and it was lapped. If you're familiar with those apartments, right outside their door wall, and this was on the second story, they have a little balcony, and then there was essentially a ceiling over the balcony. Well, the fire lapped out of that area and actually pierced into the balcony's roof, and then it got into the attic system. And then it's questionable in terms of the building construction if those buildings had very good fire stopping up in the attic space, it's like one common attic space. So once the fire got up in that area, it started racing both ways on us. Our first ladder truck got on scene, it was right in the front of the building, and I think, believe it was about seven minutes into it, they had already catastrophic collapse of the front of the building. The overhangs and everything were just dropping, hitting the ground, so it, the fire raced quickly. The firefighters did a great job of, you know, first things first was to evacuate the building, and then attempt to put out the fire. So the evacuation happened, they got everybody out and safe. Again, no injuries, as you mentioned, or I think Carrie mentioned. And then we had nine, total of nine fire departments from the surrounding area assisting us that day. Warm weather, so that wears out the firefighters quickly, so that's one issue with rehabbing them. And then we needed three more ladder trucks on top of the one that we have for the fire department. All the ladder trucks up in the air spraying water and trying to get the building out, so. Essentially, the building is a full, completely destroyed at this point, the whole roof is burnt off. Building took a lot of water everywhere, so it'll be a complete tear down and rebuild, so.
And some investigations occurring?
Yeah, investigations are still ongoing, we've got some early thoughts, but it should be finished up here and then probably next week or so.
Great.
We'll have a better idea, but. And to Carrie's point, we did have American Red Cross come out there, because we did have the displaced residents, and they were already working with those residents on sheltering. They provide money to get shelter that night, clothing, food, and all that stuff, kinda get them, kinda patched back together the best they can, so.
Thank you. Ryan?
How's our water supply with, that's probably one of the biggest fires we've had in quite a while.
So the water supply is fine, because they've got, we've got hydrants right there on Dixie, so it's just a matter of stretching in. So we did have hydrants, so. In terms of water supply that day, we had some, we had some moments throughout the fire where we had to shut down small hand lines to feed more water to the ladder trucks, so that, that's kinda typical stuff. So other than that, we ran three ladder trucks for quite a while with good pressures, and, you know, they did what they had to do. The ladder trucks are the ones that use the most water, so.
We were satisfied with that, though, because I, one of the things is, what DBW's been asking for is to loop down part of you to help maintain pressure and stuff, so.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure we're okay.
Yeah. Yep. For that area, for what we were dealing with, it was fine, so.
Very good. Thanks, sir.
Thanks for the good, complete report, Chief.
Any other questions about it, or? Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks for the approval too tonight, appreciate it.
Okay, request to approve, this is item number two on the regular agenda, request to approve 2022 Budget Amendment 17, Michigan Tax Tribunal Property Assessment Defense Litigation Expenses.
Too many words?
Yeah.
This doesn't happen often, this is a first for me, to come and ask for a budget amendment for defense work on tribunal appeals, full claims tribunal appeals. I have an apartment complex, two gas stations under appeal that have recent sales prices, and we are below the sales prices, but they're not, they went ahead and filed anyway. So I need some assistance from an MAI appraiser, and.
MAI is the highest designation.
Yes, for outside fee appraisal.
Just want everybody to know.
Correct, yes. So that's, that's where we're at. The MAIs have access to income information and can assist with breaking out goodwill from the purchase prices of the gas stations, and that's not something they offer their local assessor. So their attorneys aren't, aren't willing to negotiate at this point, so we're gonna go ahead with the appraisal defense work.
All three different attorneys?
Two different attorneys, there's one owner of two different gas station sites.
Okay.
So he has his attorney, and then there is a different attorney involved with the apartment complex. So we're estimating that to come in at around $22,000. There's about $4,000 or $5,000 left in the budget currently, and that will continue on to cover our legal fee, our normal legal fees for the rest of the year.
Okay. Any questions? Or Kim?
I think she's done a great job in the past, that's why we haven't seen this issue come up before, so I think you've done a great job on managing the different, well, basically every year there's people that appeal, I think, so you handle those very well, so.
Thank you. We're growing, our numbers, our commercial base is growing, and we're gonna see a little bit more of this as time goes on.
They sound like solid cases, though, for you.
They do, and with the growth we're experiencing, this will also give me a basis to use on similar properties. Our largest taxpayers in Independence, several of them are the apartment complexes.
Great. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion? Oh, anybody in the public? Anybody online? Five minutes?
I'll move to approve the 2022 Budget Amendment Number 17 as follows, as presented, any?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Regular agenda item number three, request to adopt resolution 2022-013 to approve Township depositories. Rachel?
Yes, so it is state law that the Township Board approve the depositories that the treasurer is using for investment funds. MCL 4177 defines financial institution as a state or nationally chartered bank or a state or federally chartered savings and loan association, savings bank, or credit union whose deposits are insured by an agency of the United States government and which maintains a principal office or branch located in this state under the laws of this state or the United States. As support, I provided bank rating information. That was provided confidentially only because the company that provided it to me did it for free, and they don't typically offer that information for free, but they offer it to all of the Michigan communities for use, but ask that we don't share it with the public. I've also supplied the reports for Bank of New York Mellon Pershing, which is the corporation that holds our securities, and Multibank Securities, which is one of the companies that I buy securities through. The other company I buy securities through right now is Comerica Bank. Anybody have any questions?
I do have a question. Should you ever change these, do you have to come back and each time we need to reapprove?
Yes, so this is where I'm starting.
Okay.
And, you know what, I'm glad you brought that up, because I also provided my investment report for our first quarter at, under Communications. And if you take a look at that, you see that a lot of our investments are very short-term investments. But since bank rates have been rising, this is a really good time to pull some stuff out of those short-term investments and start investing into longer-term investments, which I need the board's approval to start moving some money around, pulling it out of the LGIP and investing it other ways.
Ryan?
On your list, you got your list of institutions in your MAF. I guess, I was unclear whether, you know, how many of those are different, or are you just adding some, or did you delete any, or?
We don't have a current list.
Okay, so.
I went through, I couldn't find where there was ever a resolution before now.
Okay.
So I've created this. And this is where I'm comfortable starting. I have contact with most of these banks. There's a couple of, I don't have anybody at Huntington, Oxford, Sterling, but the other banks we have worked with in the past.
Well, I was gonna say, some of them I recognize.
Yes.
From being there.
So we have worked with them in the past. But I added Oxford and Sterling because they're Michigan-based banks and they're local. So I thought it would be good to use Michigan-based banks where we can, since we are a Michigan community. That's all.
I think Waterford Bank used to be Clarkson State Bank, correct?
Yes, yes.
They're still local as well.
Right?
Even though it's said to later.
Okay, any other questions, comments, statements? Okay, anybody, members of the public want five minutes to speak? Anybody online? Like five minutes to speak? No? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Yes.
Just real quick.
Yeah.
I did see the investment report in the, in the reports. And for quite a while, we, we had them as, at least, once in a while, as a presentation.
Once a year.
So the board could discuss them, and I don't think we've done that in a long time. Can we do that for the next report? I think it's just a good opportunity for the, for the board to understand. I noticed in the report, for example, if someone goes and looks at the investment report, they'll see this unrecognized loss. And I always, I always like to bring them when I saw the unrecognized loss, because while some of the board here already understands that those will never materialize over time, we'll get that all back. For the public to understand how that works, I always thought that was good to maybe show some of that, and good for the board too, so.
So you're asking that we take the report that's in here now and have a presentation on that? Is that what I heard you say?
Well. Well, the second quarter will come up soon, so let me just.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Let's do the second quarter.
You're talking about this one or the next one?
Come up soon.
Carrie?
Also, before we move on, I do want to add, I didn't put the LGIP on here, the Oakland County LGIP, but everything else is listed on here, and since I named where I buy securities from, plus the corporation that actually holds the securities, I think that we should also add Oakland County LGIP to this list. Even though they're not an investment institution, I don't. I had a tough time deciding that when I was putting this together.
So it's a qualified institutional for this?
Yes.
Qualified, okay.
Just for clarification, it's L-G?
LGIP, Local Government Investment. What did I just tell you? It was pool.
Pool.
Government Investment Pool.
Okay.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Great. All right, any other thoughts, questions, comments by the board or the public? Anybody online? There are four people online now. Hearing, none. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll move to adopt Resolution Twenty-Two-Zero-Thirteen for the approval of depositories as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any other?
Hold on. With the amendment?
Yes, that's my comment. As amended, actually. It should be as amended, not as presented.
Ah, good point.
Because we amended the LGIP.
Good point.
Oh, so you did add it? I know you said you were.
Yes.
You didn't know.
But I think it should be out there, so.
I thought we were going to do that next time it's presented, so I apologize.
Alrighty.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I never thought about motion carries. It's Carrie.
Carrie carries the motion.
Okay, now, next on the agenda, in item M, is a budget session for Twenty-three, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five. Just kind of a general presentation by Rick Jaeger on, like, a background introduction of, of how he is teeing this up for more detailed materials to follow. Mr. Jaeger, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So basically, what this is, it's, it's just a budget kickoff meeting with the board. Kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of what we're looking at, trying to accomplish, some of the things that are going to be included in some of these budgets.
Rick, Rick, before you.
Some of the increases that we're also considering.
Before you continue, I want to let everybody know that, that you have these sheets that to take a look at and follow along with as Rick makes his presentation. Thank you, Rick. Forgive me for interrupting.
So basically, we're going to go through some assumptions. We have some millage headly reductions I want to talk about, fund overviews, some finance-related activity, and then the meeting times that are going to be involved this year. Also, starting with budget assumptions and changes, on the medical side, we already know what the state cap number is going to be coming in this year, and that is what we use to basically budget for our health insurance. And it's coming in really low, at one-point-three percent, which was a little surprising. Especially when you look at past years, like, in Twenty-two, it was three-point-seven. We had three-point-three in Twenty-one. It did have some lower numbers in Twenty and Nineteen, but due to those higher numbers, I'm comfortable with using four percent for Twenty-four and Twenty-five, because obviously we do not know what those increases are going to be at this point in time, and we've never exceeded four percent, so I felt that that was a safe number. As far as life insurance, short-term and long-term disability, I'm going to use five percent right now, because we do not know what those increases are going to be. They will be coming to us hopefully in another month or so, and we can make some changes if they're anything drastically different than what I'm currently projecting at this point. As far as dental optical, we're going to use ten percent, and again, same thing applies. Once we understand what the actual increase is going to be, we can make some adjustments if we need to, a month or so down the road. As far as wages go, I believe this is mirroring the fire contract. We are going to be looking at three-and-a-quarter percent increase in Twenty-three and Twenty-four, and then it drops to two percent in Twenty-five. As far as growth goes, I think we're just figuring roughly seventy-five new homes each year at this point. And then expenditures, obviously, we're always looking for ways to cut expenditures, but I know we're in the midst of a lot of rising costs right now, so that's probably a high order to ask for anybody to really decrease their expenses. But I do think it's a good time to scrutinize your current charges and see if there's any alternatives that make sense and could possibly save us some money. So that's going to be a directive, basically, to the directors as they put their budgets together. As far as presentation changes, this is basically the same as last year. We have that new labor schedule for the general fund, which I thought went, went pretty good. It breaks the labor section from all the different departments down into one schedule, and it's a little easier to, to talk about and address. And then as far as budget variances, we're looking at anything greater than five thousand dollars. Moving on to the millage headly reduction, in the fiscal Twenty-three, we're actually looking at an overall increase of about six-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars. Now, that's broken down between the general fund, which is going to see an increase of roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars, but that was pulled down approximately seventeen thousand dollars by Headley. Fire, it's going to go up about two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars, and that one was pulled down about fifty-four thousand dollars. Police is going to go up about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. That was pulled down fifty thousand by Headley. And then safety path, it's going to go up roughly thirty-five thousand dollars, and it was pulled down about seventy-six hundred dollars. In the packet that was given to you, there is a cumulative impact of Headley over the past few years, and you can see that it's roughly one-point-three million dollars that we have lost due to Headley. Over, and that's actually since fiscal Sixteen. It was a two thousand and fifteen tax year, but it was fiscal two thousand and sixteen. I did keep the road millage in there because, obviously, it doesn't apply in Twenty-three, but it is kind of part of this picture as far as the money that we lost due to Headley. There were roughly a hundred thousand dollar loss over the four years that we had that millage. Are there any questions on that?
So, Rick, one thought is the overall increase, six-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, is primarily based on growth for Twenty-two, Twenty-three. So that growth would be new development or improvements to property and things like that, rather than for existing properties. So it's not just, it's not a growth in dollars necessarily. It's just, it's new development and things like that.
Yes, that's correct.
Taxes do go up on the regular residents, to a small degree, so.
But, yeah, limited, right.
Right.
Yes.
I just had one question, Rick. The percentage, the reduction percentage of each of those is identical, except not for Fire. Do you know why that would be? The fifty-four thousand is nineteen percent of the two-eighty-one. The others were all twenty-one percent.
I do not know of had the answer to that.
I don't even need your help, but maybe something you can just.
But I can get you an answer.
Yeah, thanks, man.
Yep, I will definitely. I'll make a note of it, and I'll get back to you. I'll send you an email. I'll send the board an email. Moving on to fund overviews. General fund. So we're starting out, and this, this is based off of the recently audited Twenty-Two-One numbers. So we have a healthy fund balance of ten-point-nine million dollars. During Twenty-One, we actually had a one-point-three million dollar surplus for the year, which was pretty good. Of that ten-point-nine million, keep in mind that we have seven-hundred-and-two thousand dollars of developer escrow money that's there. So we're really looking at about ten-point-two million. Excuse me, getting dry throat here. Also, just as a note, and not included in the ten-point-nine million dollars, there's another, almost six-hundred thousand dollars that's due to the cemeteries, their fund balance. However, that money is strictly limited to cemetery use only, so it's not really included in that net ten-point-two million dollar number that was mentioned above. So how does that, how does the fund balance compare to annual expenditures? Well, it's running about a hundred and forty percent. And all that's simply telling you is that our fund balance will cover at least one full year of expenditures in the general fund if we had nothing else coming in. Some of the things that we're continuing to, to fund during the year, which is document management project, that's going to keep going. We're going to be probably upgrading the network and township security a little bit more than what has already been done this year. As far as cable franchise fees, you know, the last several years, we projected decreases in this area, yet they are not materializing. So we're going to probably just keep it flat for the time being until we see some drastic changes. But again, we've been, we've been expecting drastic changes for the last several years with the, with the 5G rollout, and we haven't seen anything yet. Not saying it won't happen, but we're just not seeing it in recent history. And then probably the big one here is the, we've got one-point-two million dollars contributed to the Walden Road construction project, and which we expected to start up this year, but that is not happening. Sounds like the main construction will start probably in Twenty-two, Twenty-three, so we will have to re-budget this in Twenty-three and Twenty-four to cover the cost that we're expecting at this point in time. The proposed millage for Twenty-two, Twenty-three is point-nine-four-four-four. Moving on to Fire, they have a fund balance of three-point-eight million. They did have a fifty-one thousand dollar deficit in Twenty-One. Obviously, that was a planned deficit. Fund balance is at fifty-five percent of annual expenditures. They also have a CIP, or Capital Improvement Projects, fund balance of two-point-seven million. And in that particular fund, there was a four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollar deficit, but that's just because they're buying equipment. They continue with their established capital plan, even though I hear there are some changes coming to that plan. Currently, and this is based on the most recent schedule I have, they do have one new medic vehicle and ambulance planned in Twenty-four. And then using ARPA funds, they also plan on purchasing a medic vehicle and a command vehicle. Millage was renewed in Twenty-Two and expires at the end of Twenty-four. And then the proposed millage rate for Twenty-two, Twenty-three is three-point-three-one-one-eight. Moving on to police, they've got a fund balance of two-point-one million dollars. They have a forty-five thousand dollar deficit in Twenty-One. Their fund balance is currently at thirty-six percent of annual expenditures. Probably the biggest thing going on here is we're looking to expand the office area within the next couple of years. This millage was renewed in Two Thousand and Eighteen and expires at the end of this year, Twenty-two. The millage rate for this year is two-point-seven-six-three-seven. Actually, it's for Twenty-three, sorry, Twenty-two, Twenty-three. Parks and Rec. They're currently planning, or we're currently planning to add still another hundred thousand dollars over the normal two-hundred thousand dollars that we contribute to the general CIP fund in Twenty-three and Twenty-four, to support new projects like the Clintonwood Concourse, the McCord Park Development, Deer Lake Beach Ramp Replacement, and the ramp itself, it looks like, yep, and soccer field renovations. And then, obviously, as additional needs are identified, we will continue to add dollars to the general CIP to fund those items. Moving on to safety path, they have a fund balance of two-point-one million dollars. They had a two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollar surplus in Twenty-One. Their fund balance is at roughly three-hundred-and-twenty-three percent of annual expenditures. And keep in mind, that number's going to fluctuate quite a bit with this fund. Just depends on whether they're spending and developing paths or whether they're in a building year. Obviously, we're in a building year at this point in time, because that percent is rather high. So some of the paths that are planned out there at this point in time, we have the Walden Road Safety Path. That's the widen the existing path as a complement to the Safe Routes to School program, if that program even moves forward. There's Fleming's Lake Road to the Firefox Sub. We have Clarkson Road from Wingate to Sashaba. There was a little controversy on this one, but Sashaba Road, Independence Oaks to Oak Hill, I know it's on our list, but I've got to make, make sure that this project hasn't been done already. So we will look into that and just make sure. The millage was renewed in Two Thousand and Eighteen and expires at the end of Twenty-two, so we have a little bit of time on that one. And then the proposed millage rate for Twenty-two, Twenty-three is point-four-one-six-two. Moving on to sewer, based on the Twenty-One audit, revenues are covering expenditures at the, at the moment. We're continuing to pass sewage treatment increases to residents, and that's basically stopped some of the bleeding that we were seeing. They have a pretty healthy unrestricted fund balance at ten-point-three million dollars, and that's basically cash. They're continuing work on identifying repairs to the sewer pipes. A lot of this was started with the saw gramp that we, that we actually received several years ago. This is just continuing work on that, and we will continue to do that until all pipes have been basically scoped and, if needed, repaired. We have the Power View Lift Station Rehab. I know we've started to get some design engineering going on this, but I believe the bulk of the work won't be done until Twenty-two, Twenty-three. And then we've also, we were approved for the Sewer Revolving Fund Loan. I think it was right around four million dollars to refurbish the three can stations that have exceeded their useful life. I know some of that work will probably be started this year. How much, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but more than likely, this will roll into Twenty-two, Twenty-three and finish up in that particular year. Moving on to the water fund, again, based on the Twenty-One audit, revenues are covering expenditures, and they have an unrestricted fund balance of six-point-two million dollars. We're also looking at a DWSRF loan to address the PFAS issues at Clarkson Gardens. And I believe trustee Richie mentioned that we were looking at pushing a water line up Power View. That's part of this, this whole loan, and are we going to basically address the Clarkson Gardens issue? And then we are possibly looking at a rate increase just to address the operational cost side of, of the water fund. More to come on that.
And, and Rick, I, I don't know if you've got this in your notes, but I think when the presentation was made on the Clarkson Gardens PFAS project, the engineers indicated that there might be loan forgiveness.
That is correct, yes.
Which would obviously reduce any obligation on the part of the, not any, but remove, remove some of the obligation.
Absolutely, it would, yes, exactly. I have no idea how much that could be, but yes, that was definitely mentioned, and it's that type of a loan. So, you know, we're hoping for a bigger reduction, you know, than, than, you know, having to pay the whole thing, so that would be awesome. Moving on to finance-related activity, these are things that come out of the Finance Department. Accounting for capital leases is changing. This is Gatsby eighty-seven. We've been taking with it the last couple of years, but it actually has to be implemented in Twenty-two. So I'm still not quite sure everything that's going to be changed here yet, but I want to put it out here just as a, just as a note, because chances are we will have to budget for this, and there may even be possible budget adjustments even this year, or amendments, I should say. And then the other note here under finance-related activity is the second half of the ARPA funds. Basically, should be coming in any day now, it sounds like. So we do have some projects that have been identified and approved by the board in Twenty-two. Obviously, all these projects will not be completed in Twenty-two. I guess we have several years, two or three years, to, to use these funds. So basically, anything that's left over at the end of a year, we will do an entry to pull those funds forward into the next year so the project can be continued and either finished, or it may even roll one more year into Twenty-two, if not completed. And the final thing here is the meeting times. I did send a timeline, which is also part of your package. But the basic dates are, we have three meetings starting on September twentieth, and we'll have a whole bunch of funds in that one. October eighteenth is primarily general fund and Parks and Rec, and then November first is going to be DPW. The public hearing is scheduled for November fifteenth, with budget approval at the very next meeting on December sixth. Other than that, have we missed anything? Are there any concerns or things that you would like to see different? Basically, anything that the board wants to talk about at this point.
I have a question.
Okay. Terry and then Ryan.
I, I don't remember hearing, but when they did the water presentation and they were talking about the, the money for Highland Park debt and other county, didn't they? the, uh, the money for Highland Park debt and other county, didn't they get rid of that?
Yeah, in fact, we, we talked about that, that, that this afternoon, uh, that had been billed. And, uh, the governor then wrote a letter saying that the, uh, to GLWA, saying that the, that the state had already given GLWA $10 million and that some of that should be used instead of billing all the local, local governments. And so for one year anyway, we're gonna be relieved of that.
Okay. Was that part of this or not?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the, uh, extra billing to Highland Park is part of this. You, that was taken into consideration, I think.
Oh, it was, okay.
Yeah, and, and those new rates, um, from GLWA are actually coming on a, uh, it's either the next meeting. I believe Dave has that written up already. Um, so he will be presenting that. There, there is going to be an increase to the, uh, cost per RU. Um, trying to remember what it was. I think it's either four or five dollars, I think, per RU. Uh, but again, that's just a pass-through for us. Uh, unfortunately, it does ding the residents, but nothing we can do about it because we don't have any control of that at all.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Ron?
Yeah, I guess my question was just to clarify on the, the meetings that were happening. Are we, we're gonna try to do these as part of the regular, um, board meetings on those days? Or they're not intended to be like before the meeting or special meeting or anything like that?
Pleasure the board.
I just, I was just trying to understand if.
Sure.
Because it seems like they're all like on the same nights as our board meeting, so I, I guess what I'm getting at, it looks like it's gonna be part of our board meeting package, so.
Yeah, those are the long ones.
We've kind of, well, I'd say sometimes we, I don't know, in the past, we've had a couple of special meetings, but for the most part, we have done them at the meetings, so. I guess that's, that's our.
In recent history, yeah, recent history, we have, uh, basically included it in the normal board meeting dates. Uh, I think the only difference is they used to be near the beginning of the meetings, and now we've pushed them towards the end of the meetings. So I think it would still be a budget session, uh, it would just include different things during each session.
That's because we know you like to stay with us all night, so.
I know, I do.
Right. Any other, uh, questions or comments by the board? Uh, members of the public? Issues? Anybody else online would like to weigh in with a question or comment? Hearing none, uh, as far as I know. Rick, you're not looking for any action tonight?
Nope, not looking for anything. Just wanted to inform the board of what we're, what we're planning.
You just want it, want the applause?
No, I don't know about that yet. We just have to get through it all.
Okay, very good. Thank, thank you, Rick. Nice job.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a closed session. And, uh, this would be a request to enter into a closed session to discuss confidential legal opinions. A couple of them, uh, pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268H and MCL 15.2431G regarding police services, operating millage, and employee benefits. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Support, second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any members of the public or anybody online? Um, roll call.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Lacren?
Yes.
Trustee Aliaga?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Nalamoku?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
And Supervisor Fisher?
Yes. Uh, just for general purposes, it's very possible that we'd be coming back and we may take action, uh, when we do return, so. Uh, and hopefully, we won't be too long if anybody cares to wait. So we are moving to closed session.
Okay, now we have, as I, as promised, we have one piece of business to take care of. As I understand it, and that...
Yeah.
Is it D? That was your...
Yes, B is the motion, that's correct.
Oh, you have the motion?
I do.
Okay.
Can I read it?
Sure.
Move to approve the letter of understanding.
No, no.
No.
No, not B, that wasn't B. Move to approve the amendment of the adoption agreement number 03001, volume submitter 401A, governmental profit sharing plan and trust for governmental entities plan document in accordance with the new contribution schedule and authorize the clerk to sign the amended plan document as the authorized representative of the township effective July 18, 2022. And, one second, and that is for the, I'm clarifying with the HR director, that is for the IAFF, correct?
The planning document 401A is not, that is for the...
No? Which is the one?
So I thought D was for the...
No, not an amendment.
No, D is for IWA, so that's not it, so...
No.
So it has to be B, right?
Because it's referring to the new contribution schedule, which was the fire.
I, why don't you just make it generic? I mean, I think you could just do a motion without putting the, the actual numbers or numbers in there and just make a generic move to approve the plan documents to be consistent with the recently approved collective bargaining agreement with IW, IAFF.
Okay.
Is that fair?
All right, so moved.
That's enough direction, right?
Second.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Uh, my discussion would be just to clarify that this has to do with the firefighters arrangement, just to be clear.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion, anybody online? Thank you for, thank you for staying with us. And no other discussion, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, uh, we have reports, uh, we have the assessing summary report 2022, we have the first quarter investment report 2022, and election commission minutes, final April 5, 2022, any board member comments? And none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.